Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, November 3, 2025. And I'd ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Erby?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Veremas?
Here.
Well, we have an old name here. Who comes after Veremas?
Bellinger?
Thank you. I just drew a blank. Bellinger? Absent. I had Doyter on here. Chenko?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Bram? Absent. Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Nudera?
Here.
Virgil?
Here.
Nardini?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Is there anyone signed up for a public comment for this meeting, Clerk Tamer?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Is anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment that didn't get an opportunity to sign in? All right. We'll move on directly then to the business before the committee, starting with the review of the fiscal year 2026 budget. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start by thanking the council. Last time, we got through a lot, and we really appreciate that. We were able to tackle some of the areas that Assistant City Manager Kent Johnson is in charge of. We had staff here, so I really, I just want to express my appreciation for that. So tonight, we're going to start with page 2-17, Administration: Elected Officials. Before I get to that, as I have in the past couple of weeks, we have updated the circle-back memo. So there's one dated today, November 3, that is available on Board docs. If anybody wants printouts, a printout, we are more than happy to do that, but everything is available on Board docs. And if you see something on there that you have asked about and we're not providing the information, please let me know so that we can update that. We're trying to make this as efficient as possible so that all of you can look at that as we, as we move through. With that, Mayor, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Kent Johnson.
All right. Johnson?
Good evening, City Council. Again, we're going to start on page 2-17. This is the Administration Department for the city, and as the title will tell you, this is the administrative duties under wages, part of the city manager, Assistant City Manager within this cost center, along with the deputy city clerk, and then administrative staff here at City Hall. Couple line items to point out because there are no J-forms for this department. Under 530-105, Contract Staffing, you'll notice that in 26 and 27, that number goes to zero. Staff did some restructuring. We had a full-time contract employee that we have replaced with a part-time city employee, and that took place in 2025. So that's why that change is in there for the next couple of years. Also, under 530-110, Professional Services. Of note, this includes $30,000 for a strategic plan update planned for 2026. And then finally, 530-120, Employee Training. Just of note that this line item has been reduced by $5,000 to help with the budget discussions that we've had the last couple of weeks. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the city council.
And this, the administration budget, is the people up here on the second floor. That would be city manager, Assistant City Manager, the staff up there, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right. Any discussion questions? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So back to 530-110, Professional Services. So this year, it looks like we had 85,000 earmarked in the budget. Estimated spend, 5,000. You know, now it's 35. I'm assuming part of that, that delta this year was the strategic planning budget. Is that right?
I believe that's correct. And we also had a place, we also had a placeholder for a lobbyist regarding the train station, so that was a $50,000 placeholder, which we have not utilized to date.
Thank you.
Alderman Virgil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 217, line item 549-999, Other Supplies. I understand from the separate spreadsheet on potential reductions, this includes a commissioner event?
I believe that's correct.
Can you tell me a little bit about what, what the nature of that event is and what might be the impact if it was removed?
Is that a commissioner event or an event?
That is the commissioner recognition event.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is an event that we hold annually to recognize all of our volunteer commissioners. We have over 100, and I think all of them but three, I believe, serve without any pay at all. And so we, so we started this event eight or nine years ago, and as part of that, the Darryl Whistler Award is given to a Commissioner of the Year.
Okay. So you said you started eight or nine years ago?
I believe that's correct.
So we've been doing it consecutively since then?
Correct, with the exception of COVID.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Move on to the next topic.
The next cost center will be elected officials on page 2-19. And to keep it quite simple, there are no changes to this, to the '26 and '27 budget compared to '25. Be happy to answer any questions.
Looks like a real bargain. All right. All right. It looks like there are no questions on that. We'll move on to Communications and Marketing.
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to be on page 2-22. The Communications and Marketing Cost Center includes two full-time employees and one part-time employee. This team manages and maintains several essential communication channels, including the city's social media platforms, the quarterly front porch newsletter, the weekly newsletter, multiple city websites, news alerts, and systems used for incident communication. The team also oversees marketing campaigns that highlight key initiatives, such as visitor and tourism efforts under the Explore Elmhurst brand, along with coordinating the Elmhurst Trolley Program. In addition, the communication team, excuse me, communications team handles all internal department creative service requests and leads public and media relations efforts. Some of the accomplishments for 2025. This team continued to enhance digital engagement, develop comprehensive marketing strategies, and prioritize accessibility and transparency in government communications. More notably, earlier this year, the Communications Department assisted the Police Department with their educational videos and public open house regarding the new police station endeavor. And lastly, the Communication Department also developed the 2025 Elmhurst Community Survey, which is, in the last week or two, been mailed out to randomly selected households throughout the city. Some of the expectations for 2026. The budget that we proposed reflects a continued strategic approach to align resources with the city's communication goals. By expanding outreach, improving engagement tools, and ensuring transparency communication, transparent communication, the communications team will continue to play a vital role in keeping the community informed and engaged in city operations. And then lastly, several of the department's line items have a proposed reduction in 2026 as part of the ongoing budget planning. Those reduced line items include memberships and subscriptions, training, and public information. And public information is a rather large account. I just wanted to give a brief overview of what's within that overall proposed $180,000, which is roughly $40,000 less than what was proposed last year. That includes professional photography, promotional materials, event marketing and networking, social media marketing, media for Explore Elmhurst, convention and Visitors Bureau grant of $5,000, which we usually have as a placeholder, $40,000 for mailing, that's the front porch that gets mailed out quarterly, and then $20,000 for general marketing. I just wanted to highlight that account because there's no detail within the budget book of what's within that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the city council.
All right. Any questions? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. With the community grant program, and that is line 530-245, this might be a circle-back request, but I'd be interested in hearing, I've seen a number of grants issued lately to businesses that have subsequently closed not too long after receiving the grant, so I'd like to see a little bit of a history on that program and see if that's a trend, perhaps over time, or if that's a recent development, or just where is that heading?
Mayor, just to be clear, this is the, that'll be in the planning and zoning portion?
Did I get my grants confused?
Yeah. This, this is the community grant for the events that bring people to town. So the bike race and...
I don't need to see a history of that, so my apologies.
Any circle back on this?
I mean, I don't think I do.
Okay.
What's an example of that?
The Symphony gets a grant, the Bike Race gets a grant...
St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Special Kids Day, the parades come out of that fund. It's funded with hotel motel tax receipts.
And how many of those are filled? No, I'm kidding.
None.
That's all I have on that. I'm kidding. Yeah, I'll ask when the other grant item comes up. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Alderman Virgil?
Thank you. Question on professional services, the line item 530-110, budgeted for $115,000. What, what kind of things are included in that?
Sure. So that's $100,000 for broadcast production services. That's any TV or production crew that we might use throughout the year, and then $15,000 for city council meeting televising. So that'd be this committee of the whole, the prior city council meeting tonight. We did bring this to committee, I think, earlier in 2025, and we currently have a three-year contract for the larger one, which is $100,000. And typically, we spend somewhere in the $75,000 to $80,000 range, so the $100,000 is a, is a placeholder.
I see. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the, the memo that was distributed to us, it looked like a spreadsheet for, like, version two of cost reductions. I think it had quite a few smaller amounts, but I think they tied into this page quite a bit. Is that a, is that a fair statement?
That was a draft of potential cuts. We've had a number of discussions that may, that may get revised again. Alderman, and I'll be in contact with you directly so that we can meet and talk about that.
Is that something we should put a pin in, maybe to come back to that? Whatever those items are, if there was any items on there that we said, yeah, maybe that's, that's a good idea to cut or, you know, curtail, that would impact the schedule. So should we circle back on that, Mayor?
No. Well, so what we're doing is, we've, we're talking to some of the Aldermen in smaller groups to talk about what those cuts were and kind of where we think we're going to go through to get to the next year. So they're really not part of the budget right now, but there will be a piece of that that will come forward in terms of cuts that will be proposed. I don't know that's necessary, because we'll look at that kind of all at once, so I don't know that we need to go...
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Alderman Hill?
Thanks. Keep this issue separate, and forgive me if you already went over this, but item 530-999, Other Services, can we get a little detail on what Other Services includes? And my apologies if I missed when you reviewed that.
Sure. So the total for that line item is 190,000. 75,000 of that is a city center cost share that we do annually, and then the remainder, 115, is for the trolley program. We budget about $100,000 for the trolley itself, which we were under contract in 2025 at a cost of roughly $87,000, so a little bit less than 100,000. And then we have a placeholder budget of 15,000 for any advertising for the trolley itself. That could be in any magazine, any newsprint that would charge for it. It's more marketing for the, the trolley itself.
Okay. Thank you.
For trolley program, excuse me.
Yes. Alderman Virgil?
Thank you. The advertising that we sell for, that goes inside the trolley, does that offset this or does that go somewhere else? Is that a separate revenue line item, or how does that normally work?
So just, I can give a little bit more detail on that. We sold 22 ads this year at $1,000 each, so about 22,000 in incoming dollars. We did spend some money on the, the signs and the prints, but it was pretty nominal, I would guess, somewhere around 1,000 or less. So let's say we netted $23,000 in revenue. That would go into the general fund, correct? And essentially help offset the, the cost of the program.
Is that revenue tracked some, in a different line item, though?
It's just a miscellaneous revenue in the general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on. Anyone else? We're going to go on then to Planning, Zoning, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mayor. We are on page 2-34. The Planning and Development Cost Center includes both the Planning and Zoning Department, which is two full-time staff members, and the Business Development Department, which is one staff member. Some of the highlights for the Planning and Zoning Department, in, in general, just to give you a little bit more background, they aid the Zoning and Planning Commission. They work with the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee and the city council regarding applications for zoning relief and applications for conditional use, map, and tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, and amendments to the comprehensive plan as well. In 2025, the Planning and Zoning Division processed more than 17 cases for conditional use, PUDs and variations combined, and continued facilitating the updated, or the update to the 1992 zoning ordinance. Yes, that's 1992. We're working on updating that currently, and it's with the Zoning and Planning Commission. They had their first public hearing last week. The Planning and the Zoning Division also partnered with Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on the Homes for Changing Regions survey this year, and worked with Housel Levine Associates on the downtown plan update. The zoning ordinance updates are expected to be wrapped up in late 2025, so hopefully in the next couple of months or early 2026. And the downtown plan is also expected to be completed in the first quarter of 2026. Moving on to the Business Development Department, and I will say too, the, the Planning and Zoning Department also aided the Historic Preservation Commission in 2025. They got a little bit more active, so those two staff members worked with that commission quite often. The Business Development Department helps both existing and prospective businesses in terms of various items, including Explore Elmhurst opportunities, grant opportunities, and general networking. This department also represents the city with the City Center Spring Road Business Association and the newly formed Lake and York Business Association. They also work with the Economic Development Commission, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. Some highlights for the city of Elmhurst as it relates to businesses. We continue to have one of the lowest vacancy rates in all of DuPage County for commercial properties, and our Business Development Manager has a large role with that. Also of note, one of the highlights in '25 is working with the businesses on the newer online business license and liquor license permitting software that we implemented last year. That does take a lot of effort to work with those business owners to help them through the new online portal, and we thank the Business Development Manager for her efforts with that. Finally, the Business Development Manager took over the planning and execution of the city's Memorial Day Parade in 2025, and also was the main staff member facilitating the community grant program. And then lastly, I wanted to note that staff worked with the university on a business survey in 2025. The survey results will aid the city with revamping events or creating new events aimed at supporting local businesses. That was a whole endeavor this year. With that, I will answer any questions, and the, the only account I think I was going to highlight was professional services. That is down quite a bit from 2025, about $100,000 less. What we had planned for, for next year that's in this budget, and I know we're still talking about potential additional budget reductions, but what makes up the 225,000 is 75,000 for the downtown plan implementation, 50,000 for TIF reports, that's a placeholder, 50,000 for a sustainability update, and 50,000 for general planning. Again, I do want to highlight that, you know, some of these items we're talking about may be needed to be reduced or deferred for, for their budget reductions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Alderman Nardini, then Alderman Hill?
Thank you. Assistant City Manager, you, the last thing you just said was a place of $50,000, TIF report, $50,000 sustainability update, and then 75 for the downtown plan implementation. That is within the line 110, Professional Services. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there was also 50,000 for general planning activities, so that comprises the 225.
General planning. Can you elaborate on what TIF reporting is?
So the amounts that we have in the general fund for TIF reporting, that is to do any analysis associated with a potential TIF or a potential development where there isn't a TIF district in place, but we still need to expend dollars to evaluate whether we can have a TIF district there, whether we can support the development. That's what those dollars are allocated for.
I think I understand. May I, good, thank you. I think I understand. So in the event that there is no new TIF development, this placeholder, this money would not get spent?
Correct.
I follow. Lastly, the salaries and wages. I think you said it, Assistant City Manager, but I, please repeat it. How many full-time and part-time does that 352 represent?
That would be three full-time staff members, one in the Business Development Department, and then two in the Planning and Zoning Department.
Thank you.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you. Alderman Nardini asked some of my questions, but to go back to that earlier question about grants, so where would that be located in this? And perhaps you said it and I missed it. My apologies.
Yeah, those are all in, actually, the TIF accounts. Sorry, we hadn't stated earlier that it was going to be in this cost center, but it will be under the TIF.
So are all those grants funded by TIF funds?
Correct.
Okay.
When we get to TIF, we're going to tell you it's somewhere else, but go ahead.
I'd still like to hear the, I'd still like to get a sense of that, even though it's funded by TIF, and I understand it won't affect the general fund. My other question relates to consultant fees. Can you talk a little bit about consultant fees and what they're used for, unless that should be a circle-back item, if you want to go into it in more length? So don't mean to get the full report here if you need more time.
Sure. I'd be happy to give just a, a broad overview. So the, the question was related to 530-100, consultant fees. That $75,000 is budgeted in this cost center, which is $50,000 for Charlie Van Slike. He's a consultant for the city, been with the city a long time. And then 25, excuse me, $25,000 for Ken Bartels. He's another consultant as well that the city has used for many years. Those consultants have a three-year contract currently with the city, but some of their additional fees or budgeted line items, especially for Mr. Bartels, come out of the TIF districts as well. So his expenses are spread out throughout the budget. I know that may have answered your general question, but were you looking for what they exactly do at a high level?
Actually, you, you did address what I was interested in, which is maybe more so what's TIF versus, and I know we'd had a conversation about this offline, but what is TIF versus general versus capital funds on those consultant fees? So maybe that could be a circle-back item at the end.
Specific to this line item?
Can I ask for a scope beyond this line item and say with the consultants in general?
Yeah. Well, why don't you state what you're looking for, and then we'll...
So just to get a scope of the understanding of the consultant's portion of the budget as it pertains to what it comes from general fund, what comes from capital fund, and what comes from TIF funds?
All right. So we have a lot of different consultant fees throughout the budget, so that was, it's a little broad, but if...
Maybe instead of a circle-back item, I can just take that offline and speak directly with staff about that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Toledo?
I, we're, sorry, how much and where is the strategic planning amount budgeted? I thought, I thought I was going to expect to see it here in this one, but it, your itemization of the professional services didn't include that amount.
So the Administration Department that we led off with this meeting, that has the placeholder for the strategic plan under, and that's on page 2-17.
And what's the amount?
30,000.
That's it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably a circle-back request. I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, the amount that we spend on postage. You know, I, I was going to ask you a question a couple departments back, and you addressed it with respect to, you know, the, the porch and, you know, just costs going up in general. But as I look across all the departments, I'm just curious what that total spend is on postage. I'm of the opinion, I get a lot of stuff in the mail that's just wasteful, and, you know, it's possible, and I, I'm not suggesting this from the dais, but, you know, I, I'm sitting here thinking about Elmhurst Connect. Is there a way to, to push information out to an app or some different way of consuming information from the city? Just brainstorming, and, but I'm, more importantly, for the purpose of this, you know, exercise, how much are we spending annually on postage? Thank you.
And this category includes a lot of, there are things we're doing in zoning where we have, whether we want to email it or not, they have, there's a legal requirement for it to be mailed?
I, I respect that. I totally understand that, Mayor. I, I'm not suggesting that we're, I'm just curious, how big's that number? That's all.
You mean all postage?
All postage.
Okay.
And I do understand that we are required with certain things that we need to send them out, so.
Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question about professional services again. Can you elaborate in 2025, the, the delta between the 330 that we budgeted and the estimated 80? What, what's the difference?
If you could bear with me for one second, I think I can get that answer.
Are some of those, the Housel Levine that's getting rolled forward?
There were a few items in 2025 that we did not get to. The subdivision ordinance update was one of those. That was budgeted at $75,000. As we said earlier, TIF reports, that was a placeholder. Not much money was used for that in 2025 as well. And then there was a sustainability update that we had originally proposed to start working on in 2025 that we have not gotten to as well. That was another 50,000. So in general, it's a lot of activities that were proposed.
And the subdivision ordinance?
So the same thing, if, if I may, thanks, the same things that we were just talking about, 75 for downtown, downtown plan update, TIF report, sustainability, all of those were proposed this year but not enacted, and they are back in 2026 proposed? Okay.
Yes, except for the subdivision ordinance, we have proposed to take that out of next year, again, as a budget reduction effort.
Which was 75?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I will go on. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick ones, if that's okay. Last year, I went through and delved a little bit of metrics into this. When you take the total price of the 2024 actual and divided by 11 plus 19 zoning cases, we come up about $18,350 a case.
Which line are you dividing?
The total. Total planning and development for the whole department, page 234. We are on 234, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So anyway, if you take that same concept, and I believe we had 42 cases from looking at the, at the counts on our zoning cases for this year. I mean, that's where we are now, or maybe that's what I'm guessing. I can't remember where I came up, 42, but I may be wrong on 42. But we're, we're at 21,000 and some change. Is there still any talk that we could update those fees to get our department back to a revenue or cost-neutral position? I asked that question last time. Is that appropriate for budget? But...
It's, you're, you're doing a, a metric that is not fair. So this budget is not just those cases. It's the downtown plan, it's the TIF analysis, it's those zoning requests that don't go to the commission, it's the staffing of, you know, the person who staffs DPC. So this is, there's a whole lot that goes in here that has nothing to do with those cases. And I would just guess for the zoning department, that staffing, maybe is that 25% of the work? The, the cases, maybe less? is that 25% of the work, that the cases, maybe less? So there's a whole lot of work they do that is not related directly to a zoning case.
Right. So I think if we just, if we took your analysis of, say, 25%, just to ballpark in, that would just mean that we could take 75% of 21,000, that would be our break even zoning, total average zoning case cost. And then maybe we could somehow get our fees higher.
Well, I think...
Whatever that is.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure that's, you know, I think we're making up a number that may not make any sense. But we also, I think we're, there are realms of, of a range within which we operate of what are reasonable fees for zoning cases, you know. I, I'm not, I'm just not sure the metric is, I'm just guessing if it's 20 to 25%. But I'm not sure that our zoning fees are out of line, but, you know. And remember, it may be your neighbor that's coming in and says, I want to do a porch variance to go out a little bit further. And you say, well, you know, to cover the costs, we're going to go up to, it's going to cost you $3,000. So...
I'm leaning more towards Mayor to the, to the plan unit development of 5,000 or 5,500, wherever it is, moving that up and leaving the residential side lower?
Some of these big buildings, aren't they have like, well, those are more permit fees, I guess, but I don't know.
I think it's a fixed fee for a P U D. And I, is there any way we could think about going to percentage base for a P U D?
Yes.
I would respectfully request that this, if this is an idea that Alderman Erby would, or anyone of this depth of analysis would like to pursue, that it's more appropriate to do that as a referral, not as a budget discussion?
Correct. Yes, yeah.
And I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic? Then we'll move on to the next.
Thank you, Mayor. The building department is next, and that's on page 2-35, 2-35. Just some highlights for the building department. Through September of 2025, the building department has issued roughly 2,000 permits with a total construction value of $97 million so far. In 2025, the building department continued implementing the EnterGov platform. This was our first full year of that new software, which is a Tyler ERP product. And the building department, community development, if you will, was one of our first modules that we rolled out last March. We use that for all permitting applications and inspection requests. The building inspectors have performed nearly 8,000 construction-related inspections so far this year. And our code enforcement officers have performed nearly 2,400 inspections throughout the year. Most of the complaints that code enforcement deals with comes through the Elmhurst Connect app. So we continue to push that opportunity to the residents. Year-to-date, we have issued 46 new home permits and several addition permits as well. And at this time last year, as a benchmark, we are at about 50. So we're running about the same similar pace. The building department also manages the check valve reimbursement program and the overhead sewer program. Those tend to be more popular in years where we get heavy rains. But so far in this year, in 2025, there have been no check valves installed this year. And there have been 264 since the program's inception, which I believe was 10 or 15-plus years ago. Also, there were six new overhead sewer installations so far in 2025 that took advantage of this program as well. And there have been 206 overhead sewer installations taking advantage of the program since the program's inception. As a reminder to receive reimbursement for these programs, all clear water sources must be removed from the sanitary sewer system. That is something we continue to hold the line on as we continue to try to get rainwater or clear water out of our sanitary system. We expect to see similar brist construction activity, not only in residential, but also commercial properties going into next year. And some of the projects which were either started in '25 or planned for in 2026 are McMaster Car. They have several projects ongoing at their facility. Island Construction is building 36 new townhomes at 240 West Lake at the old site of the Elmhurst Ford auto body. They did break ground, I think, in the last couple weeks, so they're working on foundations. We do anticipate 40 to 50 new single-family homes to come in for permit next year. Edward Elmhurst Health at 155 East Brush Hill is currently doing a hospital addition and a new medical office building along York Street. A new medical office building is proposed at 107 North York Street at the site of the former York Furrier. And then lastly, a new four-story apartment building is proposed on Virginia Street, just south of the railroad tracks and west of York. As a reminder, in this department, we have four, excuse me, eight full-time employees and seven part-time, eight full-time employees and seven part-time employees. And this includes both the administrative staff at the community development, the whole code enforcement department, our staff members, our building commissioner, our plans examiner. So in, out of those 15, we have people doing a lot of different functions for the building department. One item I did want to note, because most of the, the budget from '25 to '26, and even in '27, is pretty similar for this cost center, is item 530105. That's contract staffing. We were able to hire a new part-time plumbing inspector this year, so that number has gone to zero. Where, last year, we had to hire a part-time plumbing inspector, and we've seen some cost savings by doing that. And lastly, I wanted to note, because we always get questions about permit review time, how are we doing on that, that effort? Our standard answer is about four weeks for, for a permit. That can go down in the winter as things are slower. It can go slightly up in the summer when we're hitting our busy season. And I would say, having almost two decades here at the city, our busiest time is the spring and then the fall. In the spring, the builders, homeowners want to get projects started. And then the fall, everyone's racing against the winner as well. So those are busy times of the year. We do tell people as a standard matter of practice to plan for six to eight weeks for additions and new homes. Again, both these numbers, the four weeks for regular permits, six to eight for additions and new homes, we always strive to come in under that. It's just the average number that we can provide to somebody who's asking, how long will it take to get my permit reviewed? So I did want to share that with the city council tonight. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this cost center.
All right. Any discussion? All right. I think we're good.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next cost center is the legal department, and that is page 2-27. So within that cost center, we have four different categories. We have our general counsel, which is 530-205. That's S R D and general issues that run through development, things like that. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, that's, legal fees and labor council are both S R D. And...
Storino.
I'm sorry, Storino, Romello, and Durkin. And then the prosecuting attorney and DUI prosecutions are a separate firm that we've been using for some time. So we look at the average from previous years and try to estimate what we think is going to happen into the future. And what we do know for certain on the labor council side is that we do have two labor contracts coming up, one with the ferry union and the next with the public works union within the next budget year. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? I will say, our, our legal fees budget is high, but as I talk to other communities, we use a whole lot of legal services for all the things we do here, and we're getting very good service, so. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question on this page. We're on 227, and we go to 530210 legal fees. I know there's only four line items in the total. 675, 675,000. Is there any way we could bifurcate that to have an allocation for city council? So in the ordinance, we have an ability for city council to have separate attorneys or separate legal representation when requested, that we'd be separate from the city council or the current city staff attorney? Is that, is there any way we could bifurcate that and have two line items?
I don't think we, I mean, when the city attorney's sitting up here, he's the same one we talk to when we're having meetings about zoning or, you know, issues that we deal with. So it, the fact that he's sitting up here part of the time, I don't think it would make any sense to bifurcate it, because we could just figure how many hours he's sitting here, and it's negligible. You know, if he's here, you know, two hours a week, two times a month, you know, then, you know, it's not worth breaking out, unless I'm missing...
Well, it would be from the focus of, of client confidentiality, meaning in the code, we, we were able to go and get counsel from a different firm per the ordinance, the last time I read it, unless it's changed.
You mean if we hire outside counsel to do something?
Right. So if, if city council doesn't want to use city staff's attorney, there's a provision in our ordinance allows us to go get alternate legal representation so that if there was a bifurcated number, whether it's a dollar or 10,000, I don't know what the number would be. But the point is, if I put a dollar in that attorney's pocket, then I have client attorney privilege, and it's the city who puts the dollar into his pocket. And city council doesn't have client attorney privilege. It's a three-way, I think, inappropriate situation.
Are we going conflict again?
Again, and to Alderman Toledo's point, I think, that would probably be a referral.
It would be a referral, but there, I will tell you, before you make the referral, there's, you know, if routinely your insurance company, if they have an accident, they'll provide you with an attorney, and the attorney-client privilege runs to you, doesn't run to whoever's paying the bill. But you could look at that and run it through finance if you want. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, very good. We're on to claims.
I'll turn that over to Director Coyle.
So the claims division is on page 2-28, and this cost center is used to pay claims which aren't covered by the deductibles, or we haven't met the deductibles for our health insurance. There is one J form associated with this. In 2025, we did have to pay a higher deductible for a police vehicle that was totaled. That's why you'll see the estimated number under auto liability higher than the budget. We prepare the proposed budget as an average of the last four years of experience, just because these claims do ebb and flow based upon what, what happens from year to year, and are not things that we can predict.
All right. So I think I might miss, have misunderstood. So the line item under general liability, 530195, that's not our self-insured retention, that's medical?
No, this is liability. So this is any liability claims that we would have to pay before we would hit any of our, our limits before insurance would kick in from a liability standpoint.
Okay. Pretty straightforward one, but if anyone doesn't understand it, let's... All right.
Public health. Thank you. The next line item is page 2-30, public health, and that is the cost center for our contract ambulance service and our mosquito abatement. Happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Virgil.
Thank you, Mayor. On the ambulance service, 535100, I know when there's, you know, a call for an ambulance, you know, often the, you know, whoever the person is, the patient that's, that's picked up, will receive a bill. What, what does this actually pay for?
So the way our contract is structured, we have a base fee that we pay annually, and that's what this line item is. The remainder of the cost for ambulance service is covered by insurance or recovery of fees from the people we transport.
Okay. So when you say that's sort of the base fee, just to have them available? Or what does that mean exactly?
The way that we, our contract is structured is they, there's a, a fee that they estimate is going to cost for the year. And we've broken it out so that this base fee is a portion of it. And it doesn't, whether they're ready or they're running a call, it doesn't matter. This is a monthly fee that we pay to Superior Ambulance or Metro. And then they estimate the number of calls we're going to get and the amount collected. And then there's a true-up at the end of that year after their audit. And if it's, if it's over a certain amount, we share in that overage that they've received from the insurance companies. And then we would get a check, which we have over the last 10 years at least, of some dollars. So it's for just total service. It's not broken out by hours that they're running a call or not running a call. It's for 24-hour coverage, plus the two ambulances, and the third rapid response vehicle.
Okay. I'm still not sure I follow exactly. So you said there was sort of a true-up. Is that to, this is covering cases where they don't collect their, their fees, or...
No, that goes to the, the overall amount that they estimate they are, that their service is going to cost in a year. I'm happy to meet with you and talk it through in the contract, because it's a lot easier to have that in front of us, so...
Let's do that. I'm good with that. Thank you.
I'm still waiting for the year when I get to go over to their office with a big check, and as they often have done here. All right. Additional questions? Alderman Erby?
What, what was the time of that contract? Is that a one-year contract, or is that an extended multi-year contract?
That contract runs through September of 2027.
And so where are we right now? Well, I know, where did it start?
Is it a three-year or a five-year?
It started right when I got here. So I think it started in '22.
I think it was a five-year contract.
Five-year contract?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
The next cost center is on page 2-31. That's human services. That covers our youth commission expenses, our senior citizens commission expenses, and then three senior programs. One is the Meals on Wheels, one is the Metropolitan Family Services, and the third is the Taxi Subsidy, which actually isn't taxi now, it's Uber, and it's working with Pace. You'll notice, though, under 2026 proposed, that we did trim those back in cost-cutting efforts, as the mayor talked about earlier, with the way that we're, we're looking at everything now, and we're going to consider that estimated 2025 to what the 2026 proposed is, and that may change a little bit as we go through this.
Alderman Hill.
So not to say anything specifically against the seniors taxi subsidy, but it, it actually seems to me a little disingenuous that we reduced the amount there, because in March, on Public Affairs, we had to approve a 24K overage for that line, and that was a 530310, because there wasn't enough budgeted for it. So I think we approved a $24,000 overage for that, because we couldn't afford the expected costs that were coming through. So to say it's budgeted now at 55,000, I'm not sure where we're getting that number from. And I'd like a little bit more clarity on why we lowered a number that we just had to approve an overage for this year.
Well, that's one that I personally was not in favor of lowering. But the answer is if you lower it and you run out of budget, you could just say, hey, the program's done for the year, which I don't really think is a good answer for us. It's, it's, it's a program, it's, we've spent more than we have in the past since we changed to the Uber model, and part of it is because people use it more. And there might, there might be some other options that are on the horizon, but it's, it's an important program for our seniors.
I'm not saying I disagree with the program, but I disagree with the idea that that's a cut, right? That we just had to approve an overage for something that we're now portraying as a cut, as a way to save on the budget. So that seems a little two-edged to me. Also, I see that for 2027, it's budgeted for 85,000, and I thought we were, is, is that to, what is that? I know we're not discussing the proposed budget, but we're going up significantly then. So what does this cut mean exactly? Is it just, is it have any meaning?
Well, again, in trying to reduce overall budget expenditures, we would go back to this program and talk to them about what that dollar amount is. We are in conversations with York Township and Addison Township, and what services they can provide to maybe augment what the city provides as well.
And again, this is nothing personal. I mean, I remember being on Public Affairs and approving the report for this. So, I mean, I agree with it. At the time, of course, I was using old data when I agree with it and not the current budget projections. And then to see us going forward and proposing even more in 2027, I just, I don't follow along with this. And I know at the time, just as a comment, knowing the budget projections, I don't think I would have agreed to the overage either, or I would have at least seen it in perhaps the proper context. least seen it in perhaps the proper context of what it is. I do remember in that report, which I looked up, that there was a staff recommendation to approve the overage and I don't know why that was done considering the information we have at hand now. So I'm, this one confuses me and, um, I don't consider 55,000 a cut when we just did an overage approval for this. That's the comment I wanted to make.
All right, Alderman Veremus, before we go back to, yeah?
I had a couple of questions. The, the taxi service, is that just Uber? You, you had mentioned Uber and excuse my ignorance here, what does, what else does that include?
Uh, that's under the umbrella of ride-to-page and it's a program that we work with the county on and I believe they work with PACE on that and it is primarily Uber-based.
But also paratransit. Uber's a pretty new add, correct?
Correct, and paratransit as well.
Okay, and then, um, I have another question. The senior assistance program, what falls, what, what does that include?
Metropolitan Family Services.
That is Metropolitan Family Services, which is counseling services that's based out of the Key Center in our partnership with the Park District.
So if we cut that, what does that mean for, for that? They are just, will not, they will have limited hours there? Just cutting back the time that they're there?
It would mean limited hours unless, uh, the Park District would pick up additional hours or something like that, but for our portion, yes, it would be limited hours.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to, I've never done a circle back this year, but I'd like to put this one in circle back. I'd like to, uh, reexamine, um, what the effects will be of what we're proposing on our senior population.
Mayor?
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 Alderman Veremus.
To that point, are we going to put this whole, this whole, all the senior services on the circle back, including the council grant, senior citizen council grant?
Well, I mean, uh-
I would like to know the impact on all the cuts that are being proposed here.
Well, it's really the last three lines, I think, is what we're looking at.
Yes, correct.
Right, that's what we're looking at, right?
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Erby.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Participating with the senior commission, um, the Metropolitan Family Services does quite a bit of Meals on Wheels and then maybe that'll come back in the circle back. Uh, my question for, for tonight is, um, same page, we're on the, talking about this. What's the interplay between youth commission and senior citizens commission? What are, what are we getting, uh, with a 9,000 versus a 2? I'm, I'm, I'm pretty ignorant with the youth commission. I, I know the senior citizen commission, but not the youth commission.
Uh, the youth commission does a number of programs throughout the year, uh, so they, they interact with the high schools, um, and some of the grade schools as well to provide speakers and, um, other activities.
Okay. I just, knowing I have a passion for the senior commission or the seniors in town, um, it's, it seems like maybe we could swap that or split it up a little bit better, but, um, is that, is that part of your circle back, Mayor? Is that whole budget, all four line items? Are we talking only three?
Well, I mean, the youth commission is, I was, I, my circle back is for the last three to deal with what the seniors, what the senior services are.
Okay. No appetite for adjusting the 2,000 for the 5303,000 or 300, sorry, the 2,000?
Well, it hasn't changed in, the 530300?
Right, it hasn't changed. I mean, it was for almost 4,000 in 2023, now we're riding at 50% of that value. So we've been static for, you know, we will be if we stick to this line item, you know, the way it's projected, it'll be three years at, at 2,000.
Well, this, this-
Seems like that's kind of prohibitive for that group.
No, the, the senior commission's not asking for anything. The, this, again, like the youth commission, this funds some of their programs like the senior awards or something like that. It's not direct services to seniors as are the last three line items.
I agree.
Yeah, so they're not asking for more, they're not saying they need more to accomplish the goal.
Okay, I appreciate you staying tuned on that.
Sure. All right, let's move on to, uh, where are we? Parking system fund.
Turn that back to Director Coyle.
All right, the parking system fund is on four dash 20, so you'll have to turn to another tab within your budget and specifically we'll go to, um, four dash 24, which is the expense budget for, um, the parking fund. So the parking fund continues many of the hallmarks. The Finance Committee, um, reviewed and City Council approved a, a financial plan for the parking fund back in 2024 and the recommended budget continues, um, the hallmarks of the financial plan that was, um, put forth at that time. Um, there are several J forms related to, um, the parking fund, um, the electricity we have talked about in other departments, so I will not continue with that. Banking, um, expenses is really just a realignment more with the anticipated actual expense for 2025. Um, software maintenance, the 2026 budget includes an additional $4,000 for our parking enforcement ticket, ticket application and then 11,800 for our license plate reader software used by the parking enforcement vehicle. Um, in, uh, parking lots, that is an amount to resurface parking lots, um, within our parking infrastructure, so that amount was increased to 82,500 for 2026 to catch up on some resurfacing. That was deferred, um, previously. And then the last J form is rentals for off-street parking. Um, the city does rent several lots within the downtown to provide for off-street parking. The majority of those rental agreements, um, provide, the city pays the property taxes on those rental lots and so it reflects the, an increase in, in those costs for the city for 2026. Um, one other item to draw your attention to, um, you will notice that there is a decrease in contract staffing in, uh, line 530105. That is twofold. There were two contract positions that, um, were shifted to part-time. Uh, so one was in finance, it was a full-time contract position that we are reducing to a part-time contract position. And then Assistant City Manager Johnson mentioned earlier the, um, the position in admin that also had a small portion of their salary alloc, uh, the contract staffing allocated to this cost center. If there's any other questions on the parking fund, I would be happy to answer them.
Alderman Ardini, then Alderman Virgil.
Thanks. Um, Director Coyle, the rentals off-street parking, um, 120. Describe to me what vehicles, what city vehicles are being parked where?
So this is just rentals for, um, off-street parking, not for city vehicles, but for city patrons. So an example is we pay a monthly rental fee for the parking lot by Egg Harbor. That's a, a lot that we pay for. Uh, we pay for, um, the property taxes for the Emmanuel Lutheran lot that we use, which is behind City Hall. There are also a couple other lots, smaller lots within the downtown, whereas part of the agreement for it to be used as public parking, the city pays the property taxes associated or a portion of the property taxes depending on the agreement of, for the property.
And we've done that, um, well, we've never charged for it, so this has gone on forever? Or, um, was there any time when?
Well, they're charging us, right?
So most, most of this is free parking is the areas where these lots, um, are. So it's free, free pu, public parking in the downtown for people who come shop, dine, um, in the downtown with the, really the, the one major exception being the Emmanuel Lutheran lot, which is used for city staff and city vehicles.
And the parking that we own is the decks? Do we own any, uh, no, I'm sure we probably own some lots, some surface lots too, don't we?
So a lot of the parking that we own is a portion of the parking along the railroad tracks, so we do own portions of that. Metro owns portions of that and so we have a, a sharing, or UP, um, and so we have a sharing agreement, um, associated with that where we keep a portion of the fees that we charge and turn a portion over to them.
And other, we have Spring Road, we have a parking lot, um, I'm not sure where else.
Ballet.
Ballet? Yes. All right, Alderman Virgil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Same line item, uh, and this can be a circle back, just wanted to see a list of those lots and the associated rental fees.
So you're asking for a lot that we are renting, paying?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Alderman Toledo?
Um, yeah, so my question relates to our net position, um, on a cash basis and the positive, positive net position after the transfer from the capital improvement fund to help pay for the long-term debt. So the, the revamping that we did is helping the parking fund. We could, could we not, um, take the amount that is over contributing to an increase in the net position and pay back the general fund from, in the past or reduce the contribution from the capital fund and use, I mean, I'd rather help the general fund out, but like the capital fund could always use more money too. So what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yes, I think we could. I think I'd feel more comfortable doing the, reducing the transfer from the capital fund and using that, you know? I think either, either transfer would require it to be part of the budget or part of an item that would be required to be passed by city council.
Say the last part again?
So I just think city council would need to approve the transfer of funds, so explicitly.
But that is, it's A, um, I'm reading the numbers right and B, possible, either of those options?
Yes, yes.
And has staff considered that as, um, in your kind of budget preparation process and, and ruled it out for a specific reason or?
So as the parking debt falls off, it'll, the, the capital funds are really getting reallocated to the police station project, so that's really why, kind of from a long-term perspective, it doesn't really help the parking fund. So that's why that wasn't, it was also really 2025 was the first full year. One of the reasons 25 ended so favorably is we did, we were very fortunate to have Elmhurst University rent a large portion of the Addison Deck, which provided some unexpected revenue, um, that we, we don't necessarily expect to have again. So just to see a little bit more history, a little more of a trend, um, we also will need to at some point, you know, we, we've ported a lot of expenses over to the TIF fund as well. At some point, those will also need to come back into the parking fund.
But from a, um, I understand all of that, I agree with it, good argument, um, but in a, you know, one or two year, I mean, we have a legitimate argument to repay the general fund for the monies that the general fund put into the parking fund during COVID, correct?
Correct.
So as a one-year or a two-year budget solution, that's not a long-term solution, but it, it is a viable option.
Correct, I would want to compare kind of what amount we would feel comfortable taking out of that and comparing that against the forecast that we did with the Finance Committee.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Erby and then City Treasure. Okay, City Treasure.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The depreciation expense while we were doing the, um, the rates on this enterprise fund, on the parking fees, uh, is it just 640,000? That's not an actual cash outflow, that's just an accounting for depreciation expense of our assets on a whatever straight-line accelerated basis.
Correct, so we, we budget for depreciation expense when we do our year-end full accrual financial statements that that amount is accounted for, but that's a non-cash transaction. When we did the modeling for the financial forecasting for the parking fund, it was strictly cash basis. What revenues are we taking in to pay the expenses of the fund?
Cause I, I'm trying to remember, do, do we see the depreciation expense over in the MUF?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're doing a similar treatment there as well on the enterprise.
Yes, in the, in the enterprise funds, we budget for depreciation expense.
And then over to Alderman Toledo's point on the general fund payback, I remember seeing that in there, uh, we're not accounting for that anywhere here to prepare to pay that back. We're going to leave that as a, as an open item of unpaid to the general fund at this moment.
So the original, um, report that went to council, if you'll look on page four dash 21, um, it has that 1.6 million was the, um, kind of middle of the page on four dash 21, if everyone wants to flip there. That is the amount that the general fund forgave the parking fund. So that was part of the report that went to city council in 2024. So, you know, if, if we looked at the parking fund and if there were dollars available to repay the general fund, then I think we would, um, come forth with a report that would recommend X amount to be repaid to the general fund.
And just to be clear, I, I'm on page, trying to find what you just said, four twenty-one?
So four dash 21, if you go to the 2024 column, about halfway down the page, it says transfer from general, 1.6 million.
Oh, I see it. Thank you, thank you.
That's the cumulative amount over the COVID lifespan that the general fund helped sustain the parking fund.
Right, all right, thank you for that clarification.
City Treasure?
I, I just had some thoughts on this, but it sounds like we're going to maybe talk about this in committee, so I'll save it.
All right. Who else? Then we'll move on to finance. Your answer.
All right, turning back to two thirty-two. So jumping into the finance budget, the finance budget actually reflects an overall decrease from the prior year's budget of 16%. Um, there were a few items adjusted in this year's budget. Um, as one of the budget reductions, we did reduce, um, an annual training to, um, our Tyler Software Conference. It's a conference where we generally send a different staff member in a different discipline, whether it be payroll or utility billing to this conference to kind of keep up on the technology of the new conference. We did adjust banking fees. Um, city council tonight approved the new banking services contract that should, um, reduce our total banking fees by about $18,000, uh, which helps this, um, department. And as I mentioned, we did also switch, um, a full-time contract switchboard position to a part-time, um, position within the finance department. So the combination of those three items, um, results in a reduced budget from 2025 going into 2026 for the finance department. And I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Alderman Ardini?
Thank you. How many full-time, how many part-time?
We have nine full-time and four part-time.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it on finance. Capital Improvement Fund.
Capital Fund is next on page two dash 70. And I'll actually take you to two dash 73. The Capital Fund is a fund that really exists to fund the capital projects paid for within the general fund, to fund debt service in the debt service fund and to also fund debt service in the, um, MUF and the parking fund. Um, so the, the transfer to the general fund is in line with all of the capital projects outlined, uh, within the general fund that have been discussed in the other departments' budgets. Um, the one item that, that we have talked about that I just want to, um, draw everyone's attention to on page two dash 73, we talked about, um, an excess contribution to the vehicle replacement fund, uh, for vehicle replacement. That is the last line item on page two dash 73, 590911. That's that extra $250,000 that would be going from this capital fund, uh, to the Central Fleet Fund.
All right, questions there? So we are talking about taking that 250 out of the 26 budget?
So what we had been talking about as part of the 26 budget was to leave this 250 here, but instead reduce the general fund contribution by 250. So this would still remain.
Alderman, Virgil?
Thank you, Mayor. Question on page 272, rental income, 470110. It's a negative amount. What does that mean exactly?
So that's a very conservative estimate. So when we were projecting out the impact of, let me step back. So the rental income associated with this account is the 180 Park Building. And so when we were projecting out the police station and moving the police into the 180 Park Building, kind of that reduction of income was anticipated to be this negative $150,000 kind of cost instead of a revenue into the fund for them moving into that building. So since they didn't move in 2025, that's why you see that zero, anticipating a partial year for 2026 when they would move in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to tax, the TIF funds.
Our tax increment financing funds. This year, we only have three TIF funds outstanding, TIF 4, TIF 5, and TIF 6.
Did you give a page?
TIF 4 is on page 5-5, under the Capital Projects tab. All right, so TIF 5, what I'll, I'll focus on are a couple of items. One, the TIF 5 is projecting to be able to pay down its line of credit by the end of 2027 based upon the projections. All of our TIF funds include five-year projections, just to see an, an outlook for the funds. The major projects underway for 2026 in that TIF fund is the North York Sidewalk Project. It's about $3.2 million that's proposed in 2026. The other, the other programs funded, the business grant programs are in 530256, and, and those remain funded at usual levels. The reason that you'll see that the 2025 budget for the business grant programs is higher is because they were carryover grants that were in progress but not completed in 2025. If you have any questions on TIF 4, I'd be happy to answer them.
City Treasurer?
I think we just approved our line of credit expired. The rate that we now have on this new line, is it comparable to prior rate?
It's essentially the same rate that we had on the prior line of credit. It's based on the sulfur, so as that lowers, the interest will go down, as it hires, it will go up.
City Manager, do you remember, do you recall how many years we have left on TIF 4? If you don't, I'll follow up with you.
I think it was created in 2012 or 2013. I think it was 2012.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the next TIF fund.
I think Alderman, Erby had a question.
I'm sorry, Alderman, Erby.
I'm trying to think if it'll apply to the next TIF. Treasurer, City Treasurer mentioned the, the line of credit. That goes across multiple TIFs. Wasn't there a source of funds or a use of funds change with the line of credit change in the bank? I noticed there was a, seems like I remember looking at one of the finance reports, there was a, their line of credit report, there was a change in the balance, like almost like we were getting source funded or we were paying fund in from the change of the, the two entities. Was there a capital flow there?
So we, we repaid our previous line of credit because that expired at the end of October. We approved the current line of credit tonight, and we'll draw down those funds when that new line is open. There was a difference in the amount paid back versus drawn down, and that's in this TIF 5. So TIF 5 had available funds to be able to pay back a portion of its line of credit, and that's why you'll see there's a, there was a difference in the amount that was repaid but not anticipated to be drawn back down.
So that amount you're talking was specifically just?
Just TIF 5.
For TIF 5?
Correct.
So it didn't blend into any other TIFs, just a single TIF?
Correct. We track all, the line of credit is tracked separately for each TIF. They each owe to be repaid their own share of whatever they, they used.
Yeah, thank you. All right, that's, I'm good.
All right, well, that would have come up under TIF 5 anyway, so.
Yep.
See?
So TIF 5 is on page 5-11. The major project that was in progress this year was the industrial concrete street resurfacing, so that project is budgeted to be complete in 2025. There are no major capital projects planned for 2026. We do anticipate by the end of 2026 being able to repay the entire line of credit for TIF 5, and we have funded the business grant programs in full for 2026. This year, there was just a grant approved for Elsie's Diner of $240,000, so that will take up the majority of the 2025 funding and a portion of the 2026 funding for that TIF fund. If you have any questions on TIF 5, I would be happy to answer them.
There it is.
Questions? All right, we'll go on to TIF next.
TIF 6 is listed on page 5-16. And so I'll talk about some of the major items that are listed. There are several J-Form items on page 5-18 that I will also address. So there are two major projects budgeted for in TIF 6 for 2026. The first is the metro station improvements, and you will see that in accounts 570110, building improvements, and also 570000, property or land acquisition. So both of those amounts relate to the metro station project. If you would flip back to page 5-15, you will also see the federal grants associated with the metro station project. The other major project budgeted for 2026 is the resurfacing improvement of the Robert Palmer Drive within the Central Business District. So that's the 2.13 million amount that you will see under 570140, roadway improvements. The other line item to draw your attention to, we have budgeted for debt service on future debt in 569999. That would be future debt service on general obligation bonds that would need to be issued for the city's share of the metro station project to be repaid with future TIF revenue. The other item that I think is important to, to mention, the downtown TIF budget closely aligns with the parking fund. There were some items that were moved into the downtown TIF as part of the financial review that the Finance Committee and City Council recommended, and those continue in this budget for 2026. If anyone has any questions on the downtown TIF, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alderman, Toledo?
I, I zoned out a little bit in the last part of the explanation about the metro station, so the current, remind me, because, you know, the metro station's just been floating out there for so long, and I think we all know that it's way more expensive than we originally thought, and that the proportion of the amount that the, that Elmhurst as a city, and therefore the taxpayers of Elmhurst would have to pay, is higher now than it used to be. I think right now, it's about a gap between the grants and the cost of approximately 12 million. Is that correct?
I think between 10 and 12. We're estimating.
And so the current, what you've got planned in this TIF is, with this debt service on future debt, is the current funding for that balance is general obligation bonds?
Correct. And it's a, because the, the term of the TIF doesn't have the full 20 years, it would be a shorter bond term to be repaid than maybe a traditional 20-year bond as well.
But you're?
But yes.
The way that we plan, so a general obligation bond?
Correct.
But that the TIF is repaying?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that budgeted in, so that 10 to 12 million is, is accounted for in the TIF budget that we have projected already?
Correct.
That we've gone over in Finance Committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does the, because we've talked about other projects, and they have to be, you know, repaid over the life of a TIF, but the train station is not really generating, it's, it's going to be ours, so it's not going to be generating any increment, is it?
So the train station would not generate any, any direct increment, right? It certainly does improve the, the district as a whole and provides to kind of the economic development of the entire district, but it is a qualifying public improvement that we can use increment in, in the TIF district to repay the debt.
Just wanted to be clear that, because the, the life of the TIF isn't as important as these other projects. Okay. Other questions? Alderman, Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of following up along Alderman, Toledo's point, and I'm going to take it another step further. Where in the process, in the budget process, and maybe it's not appropriate of the budget process, would you decide to push the train station either completely off the capital budget, or move it out for a long period out, and then we just put it on ice? How would we do that? Is that budget or capital? I mean, where would we kill the train station, to put it nicely?
Hit the crossing. Well, I mean, if it's in our plan, and that's why you see some capital projects get rolled over, like the police station, I think some form of has been in it for, you know, a few years, and when it gets, if you don't spend it just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean it has to be done then, or can be done then. I think a decision on the train station, if it were going to be that we're just not going to do this project, there'd have to be a decision that, you know, we're giving the grant funds back, or could we use it for some lesser project to put like aluminum siding up on the train station, you know, make it look a little nicer? But I don't think we're at the point right now where, we wouldn't do that, don't we? But we might do something lesser if the grant, if the grant, granting body would allow us, but I think it's been our process to kind of carry forward the funds from year to year as we're planning it, because it's not, you know, I, I don't know, for those of us that have been here for a while, and we always thought it's like, it's just around the corner, and then, you know, we, you know, the issue's getting the lease, et cetera, so at a certain point, we could take it out, but right now, it's still active. It doesn't mean it's a for-sure thing, but you, you better have it in the budget if you're going to do it. And that's, I hope, does that answer your question?
I'm not sure.
Okay, good.
I just wanted to throw, I'm throwing spaghetti again. How's that?
City Manager, you want to supplement?
Yeah, thank you. I think that would, that would have to be some sort of committee discussion and report to Council to vote on. It's, I know you said we would give the grant funds back, but that's significant discussion point that I think that the, the Council needs to consider when we're talking about this project. I, I understand that it's, has dragged on for a number of years that we didn't want to, and, and that prices have gone up or costs have gone up, but if that's something that we are truly going to consider, I, I think the Council needs to deliberate that outside of this discussion right now.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just saying, it's, that's another discussion, it's probably, this, it's not going to happen in the short term.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, where are we?
On interest?
I think that's the last, we got one more.
Moving on to bond and interest funds, which is 7-1.
So it's the debt service fund tab in your binder. This debt service fund exists solely to pay the debt service on the city's governmental debt, so this does not include MUF, this does not include the parking fund, and so you will notice that because the, the budget recommends abatement of all of the current debt service payments. There are no property taxes coming into this fund in 2026, and then you will see transfers from the Capital Improvement Fund and the Stormwater Fund coming in to pay all of the debt service payments that are listed on page 7-4. Any questions?
I guess we'll move on.
Starting on page 8-1, there is several what's known as trust and agency funds that are listed in the city, city's budget. What a trust and agency fund means is this is the, is this is money that the city acts in a fiduciary responsibility for, but it is not city funds for the city to be able to use for its own operating budgets. So the two largest of the funds that are listed in this budget is the Police and Firefighters' Pension Fund budget. So those, those pension funds have their own board, which handles the operations of, of those two pension funds. All of the investments now are consolidated at the state level, so the city does not oversee investments of the police or fire pension funds. Those two pension boards, while they do review investment performance and discuss those, they exist to discuss benefit and pension membership issues. So listed kind of on 8-2 and 8-3, you will see the fire pension fund. Most notably, you will see that the, the property tax contribution that the city makes comes into these funds. And then looking on page 8-5 through 8-7 is the police pension fund. So there are two separate funds, one which supports the, the firefighters' pension fund and one which supports the police pension fund. The other two trust and agency funds that we have, we have the Gloss Mausoleum Fund. This is a very small fund, which just exists in case there are expenses at the Gloss Mausoleum that the city, that that fund would need to cover. And then the last trust and agency fund is the city's working cash fund. That is a fund that maintains a balance of $1 million as a rainy day fund for the city. And then we do transfer any amount over $1 million that it earns in interest income does get transferred back to the general fund as just a general revenue source for the general fund.
Alderman, Toledo?
I may be getting my years confused, but the budget versus projected for the fire and police pension fund, specifically the revenues, you know, obviously, both of those overperform versus expectations. When we did our, the actuary review, they, where, where are we? So the, the, the better 2025 performance, significantly better, we're not seeing that in this year's pension contribution analysis. We will see that in next years, and it will be smooth over the course of the next five years.
Correct. And the way we budget for in, in interest and investment income in the two pensions funds, we budget at the 6.75% benchmark, so that way we know if we see projected above that amount, that means we're earning more than our, our benchmark, 6.75%, and if we see that number below, we know we're earning less.
But I mean, how are you projecting year-end? I mean, right now?
Well, I mean, it's, it's anybody's best guess, right? It's based on what kind of, as of the time we did the budget, what the performance was of the fund, you know, based any, you know, really interest income that could be. But yes, we could have a horrible year at the end of, you know, December 31st could be a very bad day, and these numbers would look differently. So it's just our best snapshot at a point in time, because we do, we do mark-to-market the investments on a monthly basis.
So you're, so you're basing? So, you're basing that estimate, projected estimate, based on probably whatever the S&amp;P 500 or whatever was in July?
Yes, yes. So, this is, you know, again, this is the best estimate that we have when we're putting the budget together to get a best guess. It really does depend on how the market ends December 31st, because that's the valuation point that our actuary uses to determine the actual report.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? All right, so I think we've gone through, and I asked staff and Council members, we've got a number of circle backs that have been previously presented or requested, and we have some coming up that were requested tonight. Does it make sense to spend time tonight and start the circle backs, or is it, do you think at the time it would be best to do it all on Council, the next?
I would be happy to run through the ones that we have tonight in the memo if the Council would like to, and then we can, it looks like we have six circle backs to get information on, and then if there's any follow-up, I mean, obviously, we have a couple absent Aldermen, and perhaps we'll need to circle back on those circle backs, but.
All right, does the Council want to, or the committee want to go on to the circle backs? We're going to have to do it one time or the other, but, all right, well, let's start it, and we'll, of course, you know, we'll do 30 minutes and, okay.
Yeah, very good.
So, the way these work is, and it's a little different, because we've had a little bit of time to look at it, but even if you haven't, you know, the idea is whoever asks for the circle back, we'll, I will call, we'll read out the circle back, and I'll ask the Alderman who requested it, has the information answered your question? If the answer is yes, we'll move on. If not, we will entertain questions. Of course, if it was somebody else's circle back and you have a question, that'd be appropriate to ask too. So, I don't know if mine is most up to date, but I'm going to start with the version that we had on October 20th, and, but it doesn't matter, it should all be the same we're adding on, so I'll get the rest of it. You got an extra one? Oh, okay, thanks. Very good. All right, we'll start with circle back number one. Alderman Brennan asked for a list of general fund budget reductions. It was presented in attachment A. Do you have questions at this time on that? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Very comprehensive. It definitely answers my question. I'm assuming as we go through this process, if this is added to or subtracted, that that would be pointed out. I mean, but I'm assuming at this point, attachment A, all those reductions are in what we're reviewing and looking at.
That's correct.
Is that fair?
Yep.
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
All right, very good. Circle back two, Alderman Virgil wanted maintenance costs for the training tower. Does this answer your question, or do you have other questions?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what the, I'm looking at here. So, in 2025, well, even going back previous years, the training tower maintenance items were $2,000 to $3,000, it looks like generally, but on attachment B, which talks about fire training tower repairs and maintenance budget estimates, it's got a, an estimate that's much larger, and I'm not, you know, maybe we're just deferring that or something? I'm not exactly sure. How do we tally all those numbers?
So, when we looked at the training tower, so the first page and the first answer with the historical does show that, yes, the last three years, there has not been a lot of training tower expenses for maintenance. When we were looking at what do we, what do we do with the training tower? And what I mean by that is, we can either spend dollars to maintain it and repair it, and that's what attachment B looks at, is if we kept the current tower, what's the anticipated cost to kind of get it to good order to keep it maintained? That's what the attachment B addresses. So, when we looked at that compared to the cost of constructing the container-style tower that Chief DuFort discussed, you know, that difference in that the new tower would be cheaper than the anticipated maintenance cost of keeping the old tower, that's why the decision was made to move forward with the recommended project.
Okay, so we, we haven't really been putting much money into it, you're saying?
Correct.
But if we decided to keep it.
Keep it, we would need to.
We would have to put in quite a bit of money in order to, okay, so, all right, I'm good then, thank you.
Okay, very good. Item three, circle back three is Alderman Bram, and out of respect for his absence, I'm going to pass on that, so we'll just put a circle next to the circle for three, at least that's what I'm doing, we'll come back to it, meeting next. Circle back four is yours, Alderman Virgil, asking about savings from buying the soil separator machine in 2025. Does this answer your question?
Yes, it does.
All right, if you have additional questions on it, go ahead.
Well, so this talks about, you know, it sounds like we could be, or could plan for, you know, a $3,000 a year reduction, but it's not currently in the budget right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But if we wanted to go ahead and do that reduction, it wouldn't impact our ability to, you know, do this.
Correct.
You know, we wouldn't have to buy additional soil, whatever, topsoil, to fill that gap. We could actually do this.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, good.
Yeah.
All right, circle five, circle back number five, Alderman Herbie, does this answer your question?
Yeah, it answered 90, 80%. The 20% that it didn't, I still have an open item on, is when we were doing, or looking at the numbers for the toters, there's an administrative charge in the toters, so the first line says refuse sticker, yardway sticker, and then refuse services revenue accounts. So, I was curious, are we still looking at that $1.90 or something? I remember seeing on a spreadsheet with administrative charges that are built into the monthly refuse amount per the contract, then there's administrative charge on top of that? Is that still going to be applicable as we go forward?
So, the way the budget is prepared was just to put a 10% increase on the revenue and expense account, so the budget doesn't necessarily get granular enough to say what portion is administrative fee and what portion is 35 gallons and what portion is 65 gallons, because we really don't have that information at this point in time. There's an RFP that we are, we will receive responses for. So, kind of at that time, we'll come back with what would be that recommended admin fee, what would be the total rates as part of that whole review.
All right, well, so we'll just pin it when we get back into Public Works.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yes.
All right, very good. We'll take number five.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Number six, Alderman Hill, can any building maintenance projects be deferred? This is, go ahead.
That answers my questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Alderman Hill. Alderman's, circle back seven, Alderman Herbie, please provide financial statements on the rental properties. Did you get those? Or actually, an attachment, I hope, attachment C.
I'm going to say that I read attachment C, and I thought it was wonderful, and I'm good.
Very good. Useful information. Now, number eight, Alderman Virgil, please outline the bike pedestrian improvements for next year. Attachment D.
So, I'm assuming the costs associated with the, these improvements, which if I recall correctly, was about 500K? I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but I would assume the bulk of those would be for the Butterfield and York intersection improvements. The striping, I assume, is much less expensive.
Correct.
Then the only other question, and I'm not sure if it's just Claire, Claire, on attachment D in the upper right, it has, shows the example for the side path along St. Charles, but it's not listed as one of the projects.
Yeah, I think that was just an example that was taken from the bike plan. Sorry if it misled you.
I would have been excited about that one. Okay.
All right. All right, on to circle back number nine, Alderman Bram, did he indicate whether he was, had his questions answered at the end of your tour, or the museum tour?
I really can't answer that.
All right, we'll pass on number nine until he gets, comes back. 10, history museum, Alderman Hill, provide additional information on consulting fees at the museum. Attachment E.
Thank you, his brevity was appreciated.
Okay, very good. Circle back 11, I'm going to pass on that one for Alderman Bram, and 12, because I know he wants to talk about, I think, both of those. Circle back 13, Alderman Hill, what savings exist in the current year budget due to anticipating the move to a new building? Does this answer your question?
It does, Mayor, thank you.
That's it? Well, all right. What do you want to talk about until 10 o'clock? All right, good work, everyone, good questions, and I'm glad we got through this. So, I think, City Manager, our schedule would be to certainly address the circle backs that were new this evening, as well as those that Alderman Bram had on the previous ones, which may take a while. I also know that according to our schedule, we were talking about adopting it, the budget next meeting. Do those seem like that's possible?
Well, we have next Monday after committee meetings where we can talk about the circle backs.
Oh, that's right, we have one more.
And then, we were hoping to bring it for consideration on the 17th, two weeks from tonight.
Good, well, we're on schedule. All right, anything else related to the budget? Thank you all for your participation. Have a good night. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan with the motion, Alderman Shankel with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you.